Pursuant to Governor Haley's March 29, 2023 revised order suspending certain provisions. Gilt Meeting Log, G L C F thirty-eight, Section eighteen. Meetings of the Berkshire Hills Regional School District School Committee will be conducted while team person in remote through March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. Again, items listed, those recently anticipated by the Chair. Now, all items listed may in fact be discussed. Items not listed may be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. This meeting is being reported by CTSB, Berkshire Ed, and the School Committee for Order. We're right into superintendent's report.
Okay, so tonight, just to remind people, we've got a little bit of an abbreviated agenda. Because after this meeting, we have a finance subcommittee meeting that everybody's welcome to stay for. Initially, we're going to start with the superintendent's evaluation, but Ann's the Chair of that committee. And I think she's on her way, so let's just hold that. And we'll jump to the other things first, if that's okay with everybody. So then the next thing would be the DuBois Grade Pilot Proposal. And I know you talked about this at the last meeting and a couple. I wasn't present for that, and a couple members weren't present for that. Jake, would you mind just sort of summarizing some of what you talked about last week, so people have a little context for it?
Sure, sure. Sam Hartz is here too, on behalf of our faculty and our instructional leadership team. Yeah, we really just reviewed that this appears to, you know, have got its start as a district priority. It shows up in the district improvement plan going back several years, I think to twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. And the teachers at DuBois have clearly really embraced this and have bought in. We've had several people do several site visits. And they have just been working at this for several years. Last year, I think ten of our core subject area teachers were full board reporting out in the style of proficiency-based learning and proficiency-based grade reporting. Three of our special educators were doing that, and most of our elective exploratory arts folks. So we have dedicated a good deal of time this year, really since the very first school day, to making sure that everybody is up to speed on this, making sure that class assignments and rubrics are indicative of proficiency-based learning and grade reporting. Our technology colleagues have been wonderful. Peter Robertson, in particular, has just been really responsive in terms of putting together a model report card that is highly informative and highly readable and understandable to families. And so we approached the school committee last meeting with a request to look at a one-year pilot. I think the suggestion came back that ultimately, this may take two or three years of gathering feedback from students, feedback from staff, and maybe most importantly, feedback from families, and giving us an opportunity to see how does this translate at mine. So we are, we are, we had a half-day PD yesterday. We once again spent our time on making sure we were ready to make this transition from a hybrid report card, which was probably about sixty to seventy percent proficiency-based grade reporting, to a report card that's really a hundred percent proficiency-based grade reporting this year. And that's, that's sort of in a nutshell where we were, where we are.
Questions?
I do have a question. I was just wondering, how does honors high honor roll relate to that?
That is a wonderful question. I think that is one that we have been wrestling with for about a month and a half. Personally, and I don't know if this will make friends or influence people, as Dale Carnegie said a long time ago. And I say this more so with my, the dad part of me rather than a superintendent part. The honor role, in my observation, has, has in some ways become meaningless. I think it is arbitrary in many instances, and I'm not sure that the, 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 I'm not sure that the good outweighs the not good that sometimes the honor role does. What I would suggest, and we do understand that for many people in the community, it's important, and we do have, we do have a process through which we can kind of crosswalk into an honor role. What we would really like to see from DuBois is a habits of work and learning honor role, as opposed to an academically based honor role. The habits of work and learning, you know, thinking back to what you already know about proficiency-based learning, is really the things that are way above and beyond subject matter and subject-based skills. They are attitudes of work and attitudes of learning and an ability to work together, being on time, being prepared, being present when you're there, being fully present while you're there. And we do have in each class Howells that students will be assessed on. We would really like to transition into a Howell-based honor role and high honor role, which, which is something that really every kid in the building could hypothetically make honor role.
Then it becomes meaningless.
It does. That would be my argument over honor role in general to some degree. But I think that the Howells, you know, a student could potentially be getting all meeting expectations or even exceeding expectations hypothetically, and not necessarily be achieving at the same level in their habits of work and learning. Some of that is still going to be around kids who have some greater privilege than another, greater background learning. Whereas a Howell is something that really every student can be on time. Every student can be present and ask questions. Every student can be a great colleague. So I think we're, my perfectly honest answer after all of that is we're still working on exactly. I think I finally figured out how it was done under the hybrid report card system of last year. And it is, it was sausage that I don't think anybody wanted to see being made. And we will, we will in time for the first quarter reporting period have some answer for that if it is a priority for the community.
It's a little bit, though, forgive me, equivalent to everybody getting a participation trophy in Little League. There are no winners, there are no losers. You just play for the game, and so everybody gets a participation trophy. I think that sends a message of, I don't know, antipathy towards excellence and merit.
I understand that. I think, I mean, my hope as an educator and what's driven me for the thirty-one years I've been doing this is, and one of the real gifts of getting to do it for twenty years in the Berkshires and run into students that are in their forties now, when I was their principal in the early two thousands, is to realize, you know, what I desperately want for every child I've ever worked with is to be the winner. Some of them, you know, to stick with the sports metaphor, is some of them are starting on third base in their, in their attempt to get to home plate and become a winner. Some of them are starting outside of the stadium and aspiring just to get into the stadium so they can have their turn at bat and try to round the bases. But my hope is that every child is indeed a winner, that they're seeing that they have it within themselves to get there. And when I see a forty-year-old or a forty-one-year-old at the bank or in a store or at the gas station, who I remember is a real kind of a knuckle-headed fourteen- or fifteen-year-old, and I see that they are employed, have money in their pocket, you know, sometimes have a kid or two in tow. That, that to me is like, you know, it's like, okay, you won. I do hear you. My children went to Herbert Middle School in Pittsfield. There were about seven hundred kids at Herbert at the time. The honor role was about four hundred and eighty kids every year. And I was like, you know, I'm proud of you. That's awesome. But that's also what we expect of you, and you're not.
And that, that big is as meaningless as everybody's aware, in my opinion.
Is it okay if Sam has the question?
Good, come on up, Sam. Appreciate it. I just want to say that, you know, being, living through the honor role that we had, it was next to meaningless in that it was seventy-five percent.
Well, that's fixable.
Well, I guess, I mean, it goes along with grades.
You set the standard higher.
Right, and what is the standard? That's the kind of nebulous place that traditional grading is. And that's why the proficiency-based reporting is something that we're really interested in. I just want to make one other point that we are not at a point where everybody's going to get on the honor role with their Howells. This is not about participation, just showing up is enough. This is about students who are resilient, who look for feedback, who are prepared with all their materials, who are organized. We're looking to reward that kind of effort that is that lifelong skill that we're, we don't see. I mean, you know, eighth grade can be a difficult time, as we all know. And eighth grade is not a place where I necessarily see in my work a lot of kids that are super resilient, who are super organized, who are seeking feedback from their teachers. I don't think that, I think actually the, under that thing, that system that Jake's proposing, that we're actually going to see a smaller honor role.
I will ask you, not to, not to ask or answer a question with a question, but you know, as parents, I would really love to know the, your take.
Well, that brings up my, my issue. I have a major procedural issue to this, and I think it came up, I wasn't at the last meeting. But our policy, IKA B, says, "Major changes in the reporting system shall be preceded by a cooperative study and evaluation by teachers, principals, parents, and the superintendent, who will submit the proposals to the School Committee for consideration and approval." What I'm, what I'm hearing is that we're doing a pilot that's not subject to this policy. Is that?
That's what I would agree with.
Because that process has not happened.
Right. And in order to, I think, have the data that that process is to generate, we really, and I don't know how the previous years where there were hybrid report cards, I don't know.
The policy was totally disregarded.
Oh, okay, okay.
Wildly disregarded.
We actually found out after the happen.
Okay. And we were trying to get at least better in, under the wing of the school committee following our own rules.
Yes, yes, yeah, yeah.
My feeling is a pilot doesn't have to follow this because eventually, one year, two years, three years, you can come back and make this permanent, and you'll be able to follow that policy.
I'd be comfortable with a one-year pilot that can be renewed rather than a open-ended pilot.
I agree. I mean, Jake's going back to us anyways with updates, Sam. But I think that puts a little pressure to make sure that we're informed of what's going on.
I personally like it. I understand Bill's hesitation, and I agree with you. But I see this, as I said at the last meeting, when I was in prep school, this is what we did. And I use that word prep kind of loosely. I see it as very important. What does a ninety-three mean? You can get a ninety-three. I had students when I taught that told me proudly, they did papers. A paper was due Monday, they did it Sunday night, and they didn't do anything for four weeks up to that. So what does that ninety-four mean? It means that they were really good at doing work the night before. This, to me, a ninety-three, there would be all these things underneath it. How do you, how do you, for example, if you're late to class every day, that would be marked, correct? If you don't hand in work, or you, let's say, no, you hand in work, but it's really messy. You haven't checked it, okay? I can't understand how under that, this system, that would be allowed to be proficient. Okay, I would say NI needs improvement or deficient.
Well, habits of work are only a small part of this.
Yeah. You know, the learning is, you know, all these, these habits of learning, handing in a paper, making sure that it's been corrected, that it follows a format. All these things are more indicative here than just a simple grade, at least in my opinion. And I like it, and I'd like to see something like, I think, what are the habits of work is effort? How hard is a kid working? Because if a kid who is, has got an IEP and is really working hard and gets a seventy-five test, but that is the, that kid really worked for that, that's a lot more important to me than somebody that was getting a ninety-five and just breezed through and didn't even, you know. I'll never forget the student who said to me, "Mr. Fields, I've never written a paper except the night before." And I said, "Well, you have an ability then that a lot of kids don't have."
And that's what I've told my boys. I mean, I had some boys that did very well in school and some that struggled. And I always said to them, I said, "As long as I see you working hard, you know, communicating with your teacher, studying, doing any, you know, extra credit, extra," really, I said, "If you get a seventy, that's an A in my book because you're not going to excel at everything in your life. There's going to be some things that you just have to work."
And the Howells allow that. They allow that recognition for, okay, you maybe didn't even meet expectations, let alone exceed expectations, but it is, but you really worked. It wasn't a game. You showed up, you asked questions, you engaged. And it just means we maybe need more time on this particular set of skills. It maybe means we need to approach it from a different perspective. But it's not for your lack of effort, you know, fifteen-year-old or twelve-year-old. And I think colleges are coming around to this type of.
That is true. That is so incorrect, though. We've been fed that three times, and this, it's not true. We were told that Harvard and Williams accept this kind of transcript. We weren't told that Boston College, Boston University, Tufts, and Northeastern have said they won't. UMass and NCLA will, Westfield State won't. There's more colleges that won't accept this than will, when asked. And, and they were asked three years ago, and nobody's come around. I think, I think, I'm totally on board with what you guys are telling us, but I think this is great.
You have two different conversations.
The high schools, two different conversations. And it all comes down to the thing that boils down to most of these debates, or this is, are we running our schools as to how the world is or how we wish it were? And maybe we wish the world was like this and how kids were judged, but it's not.
So what happens when a kid wants to go to one of these schools that won't accept this transcript?
I'll turn you in, I'll turn it up.
This conversation was just about the middle school level.
I really liked the Howell honor role. I think that's very cool, and I think it will really encourage kids to work harder. That sounds great. I do have, just from what's ingrained in my mind, a hard time giving up academic honor role. And I do think there's something about recognizing kids that excel academically. I don't think there's anything wrong with that, so I'm.
And it's just a little more, we're trying to figure out a way that we can do it, that it's not going to be like reporting out the first quarter in February. Because, because the report cards, you know, if you think back to that report card sample, it's just really, it's not a matter of running a mathematical formula. You know what I mean? It's so, if it is important, we can continue to move forward and do a Howells honor role. But we have not, and I have spent hours and hours and hours looking primarily at schools in Vermont, that DuBois.
I was just going to ask more.
Yeah, Massachusetts, there's not any equivalence from which to pick brains. It's probably being more transparent than is, than is helpful to myself, but that's what I think you are owed it. What a lot of places do is essentially they assign a number to an exceeding. They decide, they assign a number to a meeting and then have a crosswalk from the verbal to a number, and then that lets you do the math.
I'll have to be honest, I agree with what you said about academics should be recognized. This whole putting a middle school honor role, like, and some kind of public record and putting a paper, I've always thought was weird. I don't even, I didn't like when the Little League baseball scores were on the radio. I think it's great for kids to be celebrated in their own world. I think how your kid is doing academically, whether it be good or bad, is between your school and your family and not for the greater public, so I'd never.
And some people do opt out of being reported in that, right? So every, every semester, there are probably twenty to forty kids in each, the middle and the high school, whose parents don't want that reported.
Yeah. I've never done that, I would, I will going forward.
Sometimes it's safety.
I didn't know.
It's a little late.
Once you've got a big, big gulf between middle school and high school, like, I mean, like, you know, I mean, I don't think middle school academics should be in the public sphere for any reason, good or bad, you know.
And I think channeling a little bit of Sam, we need to get better at celebrating the achievements of our students across the board at the middle school level. High school has, has just a lot more built-in sort of external, nice jobs, you know, nice job, young person. You know, the last school committee meeting with those extraordinary young folks that were here being honored, it's a great example. Middle school, not so much. You know, I think we need to find ways to celebrate achievement, to celebrate improvement. And really, and thank you for saying that, the Howell honor role to me is, is, that's something we really like to press forward with because it just, you know, that's where we recognize that. You know, man, you're, I mean, to say that school is a level playing field, that would be an example of what we wish, not what really is. But the Howells, everybody can show up on time. Everybody can ask a question or two every class period. Everybody can get going on an assignment a week before rather than the night before. So this was helpful, though. And it may be that we have, the academic honor role is based on first semester, second semester, rather than quarters, because we really want to get it right. We don't want to do it, undo it, change it. Parents of middle school kids are now thinking of enough change on a daily, weekly basis that they don't need it from the school.
Jake, you mentioned about Vermont. To what extent do you believe that teachers in DuBois take the proficiency-based report card and, in their minds, without even expressing it, and automatically saying, "Well, exceeds, that's a ninety-five. And needs, that's an eighty-five," and et cetera, et cetera? Just an automatic translation into a numerical.
I know, speaking for myself and knowing what the phrase "you can't teach an old dog new tricks" means, I have to check myself multiple times a day from falling into that trap. And Sam, if you want to weigh in on the percentages across, that I, I mean, I've clearly, and then I'll shut up, but clearly, sitting with teachers at professional development at their grade level meetings, there are clearly, I think, a majority of people that have done the work of thinking about it in a different way. I was observing a fifth-grade class the other day, and three or four of the kids were so excited because they got an exceeding. Their teacher was giving them back an assignment with multiple pieces. And I was like, they, you know, these are fifth graders, and they just came up from, from Muddy Brook a couple of months ago. They, no notion of A, B, C, and D. They were so proud. And these are not, my knowing the students from lunchtime and recess primarily, these are not students that were expecting to get exceeding expectations. But they, it really meant something to them. And I think that their teachers have, have been working with them to get them to understand this means something. Here's what you did to get that. It's not that you got a ninety-five. It's not that you got a negative. It's not that you got this many right and this many wrong. This is what you did to get it. I think the majority of our teachers are in that place where that's how they're approaching it.
Yeah, I think it's a, it's a paradigm shift. And in addition to the report card, the reporting that we're doing, we're also trying to shift away from tests and that, you know, there being, you know, something like a curve test. How ridiculous could it be to have a curve test that, you know, a fifty becomes a ninety somehow, and a ninety's good therefore? And we're looking to have more creative performance-based assessments, projects, people working with each other. We get a lot of students and families that are similarly dealing with that paradigm shift. Yeah, I think that it's a real thing that people are still trying to convert. The point is that we are trying to get students and families to be thinking about what it is that they're learning rather than the grade that they're trying to get.
Sure, and the little thing I would add on, I think what's most valuable about this is, previously me being nobody really understood what a ninety-five meant. And now in a little box, there are six or seven descriptors as to what exceeding means. And young people, as they're doing their work, internalize over time increasingly more and more what those six or seven things are, and that helps them understand the standard that they're trying to meet. And I think in too many of our own experiences, like, I was happy when I got ninety-fives in school, and I was mostly frustrated when I got like the old gentleman's B minus and too much stuff. But, but it was, it was.
The gentleman's C is yet, but go ahead.
I know. I'm an optimist, that's how I reframe it, right? But this is setting, I think, clear expectations that people can strive for.
Anyone else?
My final comment is, I don't, the principles that Peter just articulated, I don't see that's mutually exclusive to any form of reporting. And I'm sad to think that, it wasn't my experience when I was at Monument, with the good teachers, you knew this was going on with the good teachers. As you said in prep school, it was what was going on with you when I was in your life and death class, is what I needed to do and understand, and then that translated into a number or a word. There's, you know, that's, and this, reporting this way helps making sure that process goes on in middle school, that I'm in favor of it, but it should be going on, I might go look at these papers, yes.
So while your final exam on your final project on the New England Patriots.
Exactly.
He wrote a paper, his final, on the New England Patriots versus the Chicago Bears and what tragedy meant.
That was the biggest tragedy in my life in nineteen eighty-five.
That was the end of proficiency-based grading.
It was, it was.
You got an X.
Yeah, I did get an X.
Do I have a motion to shut the Muddy Brook Report Card of one year, not one year. Grading Pilot Proposal for one year.
So.
Do I have a second?
Sure, second.
Harder than I thought, discussion. All in favor? Anyone opposed or extension? It's unanimous.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
So what I'd like to do now is have Cynthia come up and just share. I think at the last meeting, we didn't have copies of the two report cards, so she could briefly talk you through the.
Hi there, excuse my tardiness. We have EK, Pre-Pay, open house. So I think you have copies of these. The one with the larger print is our. The one with the larger print is our, um, last report card and this one with the smaller print is, uh, is our proposed current report card. The major difference and the reason that I had asked us to go to this report card is because it has both term one and term two on the same report card. What was happening before is that this report card only for some reason had term either one or term two. And so when the teachers went to fill in term two, term one got wiped out. So there was no way for families to see progress.
So that, I think that's pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
Two data points instead of one data point.
Yeah, which I mean is how they always were. I wonder, I had known anybody in elementary school during this time, but when I saw this, I was like, is there a way, I'm just, this field is just very small and kind of hard to read.
I don't think that it will look like this.
Okay.
That, I, I.
I like using one piece of paper, but I also like, I don't know, I feel like some people like to do.
I don't.
No, it should be like three or four pages, not one.
Yeah, I don't think it will look like this, but this is how it was, um, this is the sort of the content of it that was shared with me.
Do I have a motion to approve the new Muddy Brook elementary school report card?
Is there any place where teachers to write anything though?
Comments? Yes, there is.
So that will expand.
That will expand, yes.
Someone?
Second?
Sure. I only see one place where it says comments.
This is on the file.
Okay.
It, it couldn't be under the block of proficiency marks on a stem.
I think just the right wasn't added to.
On there then.
Yeah, yeah. Dan, was that a second?
Sure.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or abstention? Unanimous?
Okay, thanks. Um, I don't think we have anything else to say on proficiency-based learning. I think that was the overarching heading there. Um, one technical thing, we've got the October first, uh, report, that's our enrollment report. And then in the packet, uh, Rob and Sharon together worked on a, on a, uh, five-year, um, report. Right? So, so you see where we are with our numbers. It's a big, the October one reports a snapshot and it's important mostly because it drives, uh, the percentage allocations in our assessment formulas. Uh, so that's the, that's the big thing that comes out of this and that's explained in it. And, and then the other thing is, uh, where we are with, uh, and probably this one, this document's the most valuable to look at, is the five-year report. Uh, and that talks about, um, um, students by town, uh, again, the assessments, uh, choice and tuition, uh, and, and how they're broken down. Um, the, uh, and, and then Rob did some nice, and Rob and Sharon, together did some nice work, uh, around, uh, uh, ratios, uh, over, over time. So some interesting things that are going on. Uh, the number of tuition students, uh, is going down because the number of students to our tuition partner schools are going down. Uh, and, and in some cases that may, because of a really in-the-weeds thing with the state, uh, schools that don't have high schools or some middle school grades now are obligated to cover the cost of their students, even if they aren't their own students. So the tuition numbers may both Richmond and Farmington River may accept over time fewer choice students because the money they get from paying for choice students will be offset by the money they'll now have to pay for those students' tuition, even though historically they hadn't paid for it. Right? And, and I can explain it in more detail another time. But I, 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 I think it's interesting. Um, our, our enrollment sort of goes up and down in little bits. I don't think it's anything, um, uh, particularly significant, uh, though, um, we, we, um, uh, our incoming choice numbers went down a little bit and our upcoming choice numbers went up. I don't, I don't think it's marked as significant. Rob, did you say that?
Can it be true that we have thirty-four kids from Monterey who are in our district?
Yeah.
That's correct.
Correct.
That seems to have turned around a lot.
Yeah, um, we, we have a very nice service that we offer. People go with our feedback.
Many years ago, someone from Monterey pointed out that them coming to our district wouldn't be that big of a change, but most of them do already. And that was many years ago, so.
Four of us said, how many, um, school age kids are in?
I, I would've said thirty-four if you asked me. I love Monterey. How much community.
The other thing is we have forty-seven from Lee.
Yeah, that would've surprised me. Yeah, that's, every, that's a surprise.
Yeah.
And there are, and, and sometimes we interview people and ask, there are whole different reasons, right?
Yeah.
So, some of our own staff live in Lee, so they bring their kids as they're coming here to work.
You know, I don't think it's productive to speculate on why people do it. I don't think you know any more than anybody else knows.
People tell us.
Yeah, yeah.
So, a- 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 and, and the arts, the, the vocational things, those have all drawn people. Uh, you'll be happy, you know, football continues to draw people more than it has.
And we're seeing a little bit of this team membership.
Right, in the past. Uh, um, uh, special education is a draw, uh, for students, uh, the, the range of programs we'll offer.
Yeah, that's, isn't?
Anything else I'm gonna say? And I'm happy, this may be one that's, it's hard to digest at all, so like, go home with a highlighter and mark it up and. And, yeah, we can.
You know what I mean? Thirty-nine to three in Monterey.
That's interesting. Okay, so, the last thing I'd like to talk about in this section, and I, I defer to Anne on it, and then I'm happy to comment on it, is my own evaluation. So Anne, if you're okay with that, can you just sort of talk people through the process and, and where we landed?
So, um, four of us did, um, evaluation too. And it was tough this year because for a lot of reasons, a lot of things happened, a lot of things that were upsetting to uh, the school, school stuff in this whole district, um, and including bigger being out. So this is very late for one of these, we're trying to have it for the other G, um, but within that, so this covers, um, from Ju- July first of twenty twenty-three through the end of September, um, of this year. Uh, we have to turn out a report that the state sets up for us, so that's what you see is the some end of cycle, some of the evaluation report. Um, so all the parameters are set by the state, except for the, um, superintendent sets his own goals, so he also gets rated on how well he met his goals. So I think you can see, um, I was gonna see the grades, as it were. And yes, you might, might well in your head follow A, B, C, D, or something like that. Um, because it's, it is, um, I mean, they're trying to make it by having all this, this rubric, right, that you're actually rating on certain things, but a lot of them are a little tough to read down. But, um, we did try to put comments on things and, and so you see what's there. Most everything you did write, like, some about it. But this is a new on process that, um, we use Peter, not the grading part, but the, uh, meeting with him about his goals and parts are going on. And there are two other thing numbers here.
Anyone want to add to this, if you want?
Yeah, I mean, the, the, uh, this was a tough year, right? There were two big things that happened this year, the, the uh, police search and then my own medical stuff. Uh, and, uh, and, uh, I, I am glad that I'm looking back on this and this is in the, in the future. Um, there, there's some clear implications out of this, right? The, the, the most obvious one is, is, um, what happens for another, uh, search to be requested, right? And, and I'm clear as day on that. And, and talking to the lawyer, requesting a warrant and, and all of that. Uh, the, the other couple areas that, that I, I flagged, and what's very unusual is mine is the only evaluation that's, uh, public. Right? Totally public. Like, I'm rated on twenty-eight points and everybody gets to see it and, and the media will print it. Some people in their entirety tomorrow. Um, the, the couple other areas that I think we've set up really well on is, uh, a greater investment on the observation and evaluation process. Uh, and we've got a whole set of structures that are making that happen and I'm really committed, uh, to spending more time in schools. And, and then one that we don't actually talk a ton about is, is connected to, uh, our, our historical testing history uh, and a, a need for continued growth, uh, in math especially. Right? So, so that's something, it's very concrete that, that we'll all, uh, all be working on. Um, but the places where I shined in spite of this, it's because I got all this support from really thoughtful people, uh, and the places where I, I struggled, uh, I, I just take responsibility for. So I'm, I'm excited to, to turn the page on this, to set some new goals that we started working on verbally already that I'll, I'll move to do with, uh, after the reorganization with the new, uh, credit.
So I have a motion to accept the certificate's evaluation.
Oh, much.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? Anyone opposed? Unanimous?
And Peter, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good, sir. Thank you for being supportive and the four people that, that were part of that.
Yes, thank you to the committee. For all of our guests.
We had a lot of conversations.
Yeah.
And I think we ended up in a, in a fair, same place.
Uh, so I think, I think, yeah, I think we're mostly done with this part of the meeting unless anybody has anything else, including public comments. We will adjourn the school committee meeting in order to finance subcommittee meeting. Anyone have anything else? And so if anybody in the public wants to raise a hand, uh, feel free to do that.
Not seeing anyone. The school committee portion of tonight is playing animals consent adjourned. We're staying on the same zoom line, correct?
Yeah.
So, if you, if you wanna hang in there.
Uh, Steve Boyd is.
Okay, good. Steve, go right ahead.
Uh, thank you, uh, to the committee, uh, Steve Boyd, West Dockridge. Um, I, I'm, uh, trying to follow on the agenda. It looks like there's a lot to get to in terms of the, um, finance subcommittee, but it looked like on the agenda there was gonna be a report on the proficiency based grading. And I'm just looking for some orientation around whether or not that's gonna be discussed tonight.
We, we did the proficiency-based grading under Muddy Brook and under Du Bois.
Okay.
We already did that.
Okay. I, I did not, uh, log in early enough to hear it. I apologize. I'll hold my comments for other. My, my, my question was really regarding the high school, so maybe it's for another time.
Well, we're, we're not discussing the high school all, nor are there any plans to do that.
Understood.
Yeah.
Do that.
Good.
Yes.
You can tell he started fights.
Yes.
Maybe on the same time.
Yeah, exactly. Steve, there was one other thing I did wanna share.
Yeah.
I wanted to do that quickly. So, um, this for, for three of our members is their, their last meeting and, and Steve and I talked about this. Uh, and I wanted to, uh, uh, thank the, the three members who are stepping off tonight. Uh, and we've got some sizing stuff to do, but, but we got some fleeces. Could I, if, if I picked the wrong size, then, then I just picked the wrong size, right? And talk about it being evaluated.
Yeah.
They're evaluating next year. There's no way to pick the wrong size. But, but I, I have a, a sample that I'll hold up. But, but in, in particular, I wanted to, to really thank Anne, Cory and Bonnie for their time on the committee, because this is your last formal meeting in committee. Um, and we got you a very fashionable Spartan fleece, uh, that you can wear to your next football game or other public thing. Soccer game. Uh, so I'll talk to you about sizes and I'll follow up on that. But I, I did wanna really thank the, the three of you. Uh, being, um, on the school committee is, is challenging. There are lots of meetings, there are long meetings, uh, and, and you all had, uh, significant impacts in lots of different ways.
Yeah, this has been a really good committee, uh, in many, many ways. We had a lot of bumps this year. We, we all made it through. And, uh, the three of you were really important to this and we're gonna miss you. And, um, who knows? Other people come back? Maybe we'll be lucky enough to get you back.
And there is a, there is a tradition of former committee members being drafted, so, so be careful.
Thank you very much. Right? Absolutely. Anyone have anything else? But you name us consent, this part of the meeting is adjourned.